We'd like to call the work session to order February 18th. Heather Rowe will be at the board meeting and trustee Jimmy Wilson will also be at the board meeting. They called and they have health issues right now. What did you have in mind?
The first item on the agenda for the work session is a 2020 DTE gas upgrade. Hi Molly. And just remember, the person who types the minutes, they are not in this room, so it's really good when you're talking to the microphone.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here this evening. I want to introduce myself, Molly Lumper Coy, DTE Energy. I'm the regional manager. I'm now your regional manager as I've taken over Washtenaw County. I also support Monroe and Lenawee. And I'm not new to the area. I've always been Paul Gans's backup and he has mine. Paul's retired and Derek Kruchner, who was here for a short time, had left for a job at Consumers Energy. But I've been with DTE for 29 years and I also happen to chair the EMU Foundation Board as well. So I know the area. I've been through leadership Ypsilanti and went to school at Eastern and kind of back to hometown here. So anyway, it's great to be here today. We've had some really good interactions thus far. I know we met with some of the board members back about a year ago, foreshadowing the work that we'd be doing out here this year. And recently had the opportunity to meet with Brenda and Brenda suggested we come and meet with all of you. And so we're pleased to be here. So let me introduce some folks that I've got here with me today and I'll just ask them to stand up and then I'm going to turn it over to Brandon Francis, who's going to walk you through a short PowerPoint. But we have with us here today Elizabeth Robashar, Communications Lead, Bob Henderson, who's our Manager of Capital Projects Implementation for Gas Operations, Brian Valerance, Gas Operations. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Brandon Francis. He's with MEP Project Management. Thank you.
Thank you Molly.
I'll kick it off real quick. We're on slide two. So it's kind of an introduction of this program. We have approximately 3,000 miles of legacy gas main in our system throughout the state and we're currently approved through the Michigan Public Service Commission on an 18-year pace to retire all of that main. We have a risk model that kind of identifies our riskiest segments and we tend to follow that. But we also do municipal grids and that's what we're targeting here in Washtenaw County, Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti. They're not the highest risk grids in our system, but we do have legacy main in the ground in Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti. And if we were to wait till the end of the program to do it, we would be doing 200 miles in one year here in the city. So basically what we're starting here is kind of the first phase of a long-term program over the next few years where we're going to target every segment of legacy gas main, cast iron, unprotected steel, things prone to increased leaks. And try to chip away at that five to 10 miles a year while installing brand-new plastic gas main and installing it at a higher pressure that leads to more reliability. Along with the program, we will move meters outside of houses if they currently are inside and that allows us to have safer access to the meter and an external shut-off to the residents. So we're proposing this year in 2020 to do phases one and two. We have a phase three and a phase four planned. Phase three would most likely be next year and phase four the following year in 2020. But phase one and two consist of about five miles of retirement of legacy gas mains and we'll get to that on the next slide in a minute. But overall, this entire program for the next 18 years, we're spending roughly $3.5 billion across the state to retire these 3,000 miles. So the scope of work, approximately 6.8 miles will be installed to retire that five miles of legacy main. There's 135 inside meters in this area, a total of 547 services or customers or residents will be impacted. We started main installation about a week ago and service work starts in a week or two where we start making appointments with some of the customers. And property restoration, we have a policy of doing as much hard surface sidewalk or road restoration we can in the winter if the weather allows. If not, we put it on our backlog list and we start as early as we can, normally May 1st is what we target. And we have a target of a month to complete all backlog by June 1st. So Brandon, do you want to walk us through kind of the overall grid and kind of our plan here?
Yeah.
This is Brandon Francis, Project Manager. He'll be handling the day-to-day scheduling and communications with the residents.
So what you see here is I-94 to the north and then this is South Grove Street that runs on the south side here. And then this dividing street in the middle. What is it?
McCartney.
McCartney, okay. Can I remember that? So this is the area that you're seeing and then our contractor, Corby Energy, here will be working in this area from now to approximately mid-September is what we're targeting right now. And then DT will also be in here doing the service work as well.
Brandon, if I can interrupt you.
Sure.
I missed introducing Kyle. Kyle is.
Kais.
I'm sorry, Kais. Sores is with Corby Energy. He's the project manager, so they're our contractor for the project.
And then we also have Dan Sand as our other project manager here.
We might need everyone some cards.
Absolutely.
For the record and make it easier.
Yes, please.
Okay. If you want to go to the next slide here. So this talks a little bit about restoration and it talks about the timing of the restoration zone, the winter, how we try to do it as weather permitting. And then the backlog customers, where it happens in the off-season is done before, you know, really before June 1st. I think we kind of talked about everything on this slide. So our methods of communication. So 30 days prior to construction, we send out letters that go in a special yellow envelope. Do we have an example of those? We found that by using the yellow envelope, we get better response to the letters, more people open them instead of just tossing it aside. So that kind of talks about the program. And then it also has a link to our website. So we have a website that's updated weekly that residents can go to and it's interactive. It shows where the main is being installed and if you click it, it also has the high-level date. So then we also have door hangers that go out and so those go out to schedule an appointment to move out the meter where there's a number of the foremen from DTE and then they call or they'll knock if they're home to make an appointment for the meter. There's also one for restoration and then one for final restoration. So we'll go over that on the next slide here. So here's an example of the letter. On the bottom corner, it has the number to the service station. So that goes, if they call that, it doesn't go to, the DT number goes directly to our station where they can be, talk to a live person pretty much right away. Go to the next slide here. So here's an example of the door hanger. It has an area for the foreman to put his name and contact information and then it also walks through the process and what they can expect really when he arrives at their home. Next slide. So here's the cadence. So 30 days before we have the letter, there's an app called Next Door that people can go on that talks about really if they have any questions. It works with some of our DT folks too that are linked up with it.
We monitor social media for any concerns or people posting things about the gas program. We also, I think we have a program internally to DT if there's any people that work for DT in this area that have access to the app that can kind of see in it. They raise their hand and direct it to me and Brian if there's any issues. I mean, really, most of our issues are with restoration. It's the most visible part of the project. So communicating, 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 communicating that there will be a minor disruption to your hard and soft surface in front of your house, but this upgrade, once it's done, really reduces the amount of emergency leak repairs and times will have to be in the area in the future.
Right. So 30 days before we have the initial letter and then a post goes out on Next Door. 14 days prior to the construction, we have an email notice that goes out. On the day of construction, usually when the foreman is out there, he will make contact with the customers. If they're not home, he leaves a door hanger. And then zero to seven days after, a Next Door post goes out to talk about restoration. And then the website is then updated again and shows services and the restoration timeline. So this is the number to Coolidge Service Station located on Schaefer in Detroit. Eight to four, they can call that number and they can get ahold of a real-life person there that's specifically dedicated to the gas renewal program. And that is it. Any questions?
All right. Question?
Do you have a list of streets? Because you can't read it on the map.
Okay. Yeah, we have a list of streets.
That would help.
I can also send that map. I can also send the PDF of that map. It's easier to see.
Yeah, because you can't make them on it.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair. Go ahead. Yeah, the only question I'd have is, once you disconnect the meter, hook it back up, I assume you go back in and light any of the pilot lights and everything.
Correct.
And let's say that you unhook it, it's probably a 10-minute ordeal or 15-minute ordeal to transfer them. And what if I happen to leave the house and I'm not available to have you relight those pilots? Do you, how would you approach that?
So I believe your question is.
If you could come to the microphone, please, because the person who does the minutes can't hear you in your chair.
Yet they're on a recorder.
So the first question was, how long is the gas going to be off from the street when we're doing the hookup of the new service? About an hour typically. In the winter, they try to really, you know, not 60 minutes, try to make it as fast as possible because we don't want the house to get cold while we're doing the work. And the second question is if you have to leave while we're doing the work, we'll leave the number and you can call in and we'll come back when you get home. Thank you. And I have some cards.
Your name again was?
I'll give you mine. I'm Brian Valerance. I'm the General Manager of the Gas Renewal Program.
Thank you. Thanks. Other questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, just want to make sure I'm understanding everything correctly. So first, I'll go back to this. So on the scope of work, it is saying that you're installing 6.8 miles of new gas main?
Correct.
Okay. Some of the areas, and this map was really hard to read, but I tried very hard. Does the streets include like Gates and Pasadena area?
I don't think, we're not in that area.
Okay, it was really hard to read because I could, yeah.
Yeah.
It was extremely hard.
Yeah, I'll send out the actual overview map that we have.
Yeah, okay. All right, yeah. Because if it's not, then I probably wouldn't have those same questions that I'm having. But I guess, go ahead. Because he may be looking, pulling it up.
Yeah, I'm looking at a larger version here. So basically, you know, we're starting over, I would say Bradley Avenue in Grove and kind of working our way to the west, south of 94, all the way to approximately Smith.
Okay.
Bounded. We do have a little that spills over. So Ypsilanti 3 grid would be, there's a crossing that goes across the freeway to the north and there's a triangle there, kind of a neighborhood. And then that entire triangle is Ypsilanti 3. That would be our 2021 work. And then Ypsilanti 4 would be continuing Ypsilanti 2, excuse me, Ypsilanti 2 all the way to the lake, kind of to the west. So there's, we can break out kind of a phase map too that has kind of an overall, you know, different colored for the grids. We are elevating and renewing the apartment complexes to the south of.
Lake Shore.
Yes. And a lot of that is 70s, 80s plastic. It's a little newer, but it's still going to be brought up to the higher pressure of 60 PSI.
Specifically, I guess my question is, and I know McCartney was mentioned, so that's why I asked that question. Because if there's new main that's being installed, I'm assuming that means it has to be put in underground, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. That would be the concern if you're, and I don't know, you said you're doing it in phases, so I'm not sure if the McCartney phase is phase one or no.
McCartney is part of phase one. We go all the way up to William and right south of the freeway and stop at this point. I believe the next phase, phase three after this year, takes us across the freeway at McCartney up into the northern area.
Okay. So this is, the reason why I'm asking these questions is because specifically, and I know this doesn't have anything to do with you all standing here, but when you go up under the ground, ground can be unsettled, right? And when the ground is unsettled, then basically things can happen, right? Vermin, things of that nature can get out from under the ground. My specific question is, what type of protections would you be installing, would you be installing to ensure that that does not happen?
So we install the pipe via directional drill method. So we will dig a pit and the pipe's typically installed between three or four feet deep and a directional bore machine will drill under the ground, you know, in a roughly two-inch hole and grab the pipe and pull it back. So it's not very disruptive to the, you know, to the ground. We will bring in, we truck out the existing soil, we bring in clean fill and compact it in the bore pits where we did disturb and bring it back up to the ground. So it's not like we're open trenching, open cutting, you know, 100% of this project.
Okay. And I guess my.
And then we're also permitted with the Washtenaw County Road Commission on this. So we're held to their standards as well and our main locations were selected by the Road Commission.
They were selected by the Road Commission to start on the McCartney area?
Within the, our project location was selected by our engineering group, but the location within the right-of-way, we call it the running line, was selected by the Road Commission.
Okay. And there's no other, I guess basically there's no way that the phases could be re-autored not to start with the McCartney area first? There's specific reasons why I'm asking that. Because that area is going through a vermin infestation right now.
Really?
Yes.
What type of vermin?
Rats.
So McCartney goes probably in April.
Yeah, it's a few months.
April or May. It's one of our, it's a main header street, so it has bigger pipe on it. So you're, are you talking north of the freeway or south of I-94?
North.
North?
Right, of the freeway, yeah. With a Nexus Pipeline that is east of it. And particularly, the reason why I'm asking these questions is because we don't know if that infestation is going to be done by April or May or June, because that's actually the summertime. So it would need to be reevaluated at that point. Particularly, my concerns are, I don't know if we vote on this or not, it may just be something that's getting ready to get done. But either way, my concerns are we don't need to exacerbate a problem that's already taking place in that community. So if it was any way to, you know, kind of make that area not phase one, that would be great.
As far as push it off to a future year?
Yes.
Okay. It's something we could look at with our engineering group. I've never experienced overlap with a vermin infestation, so that's, but you don't want to be disruptive to the residents, you know, for an extended period of time. So we're definitely aware of that. Let us get back with you on that.
Just basically anything that's going into the ground. As for meters, that's different. That's going on the house.
Sure.
But when you're putting something in the ground, that can exacerbate a problem that already exists here.
And that, you said that problem exists all along McCartney, all the way?
North.
North, okay.
And yeah, so particularly, just to make life very short, even though it's the Nerf side and I think you're all on the south side, if things are already kind of unsettled, that can make it more unsettled. Is that a good way to say it?
We may have some flexibility in doing Ypsilanti 4, you know, the western grid before we go north, so we'll have to get back with you on that when we check with engineering.
Could you describe like what you're going to do? There's an existing line and you're going to abandon that.
Correct.
So you're not going to, you're going to put in a new, in its trench, bore and trench, is that what you're doing or is it open?
We will directionally drill as much as we can. We may have to open, you know, open cut some areas given, you know, tight clearances or whatnot.
And what is the, what?
When you open trench, it's probably a foot or two wide. It's nothing, we're not going very deep where we need to step back at all. So, you know, three feet deep, you can pretty much take a bucket down. But, you know, most of the bore pits will be, you know, four foot by five foot holes in the ground.
And those are every three to 500-ish feet.
For the main and then each service line, you know, we set up and shoot the service to the, basically to the house.
I know when we met, Mike Hoffmeister was also there.
That was me.
That was you for something else?
No, no.
But as much information, we have that link and everything, the more information we have, you know, the better. You were going to do this last year because of the timing or I don't know what happened, but something happened. You didn't do it last year, so. And this is, because there was some.
We were working through some.
Permitting with Evan.
The Drain Commission.
Yeah, there was something that delayed it. Yeah. Yeah, so we need to.
We do cross the Washtenaw County drains approximately 50 times throughout this project, so we work through permitting with them at those locations.
And Yucca, you work with Yucca, right, on the location of that?
Yeah.
So this is identified as the older part of your system and you're going to?
Yeah, it's not part of our, you know, top 20, you know, risk projects, but, you know, we have been approved to do work in Washtenaw County. Just, you know, five miles at a time is a lot better than 200 miles in one year. So I really like the strategy of, you know, we may do 10 miles one year and none the next and 10 miles, it's kind of fluid. So we do have flexibility to move projects around, given if you have paving programs in the future or, you know, water main replacements or sewers. So we're not bound to this risk model like we are in some of our other areas, so.
There is a perception that when you dig utilities, it causes, you know, the rats to come out because of the boring and the.
I can imagine. I really, I've never seen that, but I can visualize that.
Have you heard of it though?
No, I haven't.
Oh, okay. I hear it all the time here.
Yeah, I'm sure they, I'm sure they do. Kais, have you ever experienced that?
That's the first I've heard of it, but.
Sewer projects.
It's a normal sewer problem.
Yeah, we're going to, yeah. We're going to have a lot of rain this year too, I hear, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
One quick question. What size is your main run? Pipe, four inch?
It varies based on capacity. So typical residential street, you'll see on the map, the black-colored ones are two inch. That's our smallest main. You know, over on Grove.
On the south.
Grove is, I believe, six inch or eight inch. That's about as big as, about as big as we go.
And what, half inch, three, four inch?
Inch and an eighth typically to the house, yes. And we're retiring various sizes, various materials. There's kind of a mixture of old and new plastic and so, you know, when we go into an area and we leave, all the meters are moved out, all the main is plastic again, all the leaks are remediated and it's a pretty clean approach.
Madam Chair, you mentioned that you can tailor the areas. Is it other areas in Ypsilanti Township that these upgrades are scheduled to happen to?
There are other areas of legacy main. We really only forecast out kind of a three-year plan and so that's why we've only identified Ypsilanti 3 and 4, you know, as our next two years. But again, if there's known projects or known issues, you know, we will pull things forward into certain years.
Okay.
Because this isn't risk-based work, it's strictly targeting the legacy main.
Yeah, okay. That's good to know.
It is.
Hopefully that would be something that would be considered also.
Absolutely.
At least until the problem that exists is under control.
Now, these two grids do have to go first. I do want to caveat that because there's three district regulators within this grid. A district regulator ties into a higher-pressure line, like 100 PSI and cuts it down to 60 PSI for us. So we're basically turning transmission into distribution, so we pull gas from there. So what we're doing here is we're starting in a new area of 60 pounds that doesn't exist in this area. Once we do this, we can then, you know, start to expand off of it in different directions without having to build a new, you know, regulating station.
And would that be off of McCartney or somewhere else?
It's off of Grove. I think there's three, there's one at Grove and Snow existing. There's one at Grove and McCartney.
Another at Grove and Lake.
So we're building one new vault and then reconfiguring two others to fit this new system.
Okay. Well, I made my comments pretty well, no? But yeah, if there's any way to not disturb that area, at least for this summer, I think that would be a really good thing.
Yeah, and we can talk about, you know, what the appropriate amount of time is too. If we need to let it rest a year or two, that might be okay too. So we'll take that action to see what our flexibility is.
It'd be great.
I think as long as we're capturing five to 10 miles in this area every year, then I think our goals are met.
And I was corrected, Clerk and Rowe and Larry Doe said that it's south of the expressway.
South of 94 is the infestation area?
I think it's north.
It's north and that, the problem is.
The problem's north. We're working south, but next year we're planning on working north, so.
So it's, yeah.
So it may be an non-issue if we can let it rest till next year, but.
Anyways, we're directionally deficient, so we apologize.
It's all right.
Thank you so much again.
Thank you for coming out and get everyone's card, which I know, is that what you handed us, all of them or just yours?
Mine.
Okay. And I like the fact that you have a number that they can really talk to a live person.
And that's not only in the ladder, it's in the door hanger as well.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a 2040 Master Plan presentation by Jason and Megan.
Do you have cards? The people who spoke? I didn't get everybody's cards. I got Brian and Molly's.
I'm all of cards, but I think Brenda has a copy of mine or one of mine from.
Good evening.
Jason Iguanelli, I'm the Planning Director and Megan Hassan-Minock is with Carlisle Wortman and Associates. We're here tonight to go over with you, slides show presentation of the Ypsilanti Township 2040 Master Plan. This process has been kind of going on since 2018 and we're sort of at the final flourishes and touches of the plan and looking to have it adopted. This plan, as you know, started when I was still on the Planning Commission. I was a member of the Steering Committee as well. I know a lot of you were also involved in all of the public engagement and all of the efforts that went into this plan. So this plan is very robust in community engagement and I think something that we can all be proud of. The comments that were received by the Planning Commission recommending adoption of this plan were overwhelmingly positive and very, people couldn't express enough how much they felt important and. uh how much they felt important and as a part, an active part of this overall plan. So I I guess the emphasis can't be made enough about how the the community was very involved in this process throughout. Um so this evening, we're sort of here um uh to go over this with you and then some of the adoption steps that that have been taken so far. So the the Planning Commission has actually submitted a draft, uh recommended that you folks submit a draft to adjacent communities, uh which is a 63 day reviewing period, uh which has um already been completed. Uh and we never received, we received some comments from the county, but they weren't, uh they were basically comments recognizing the plan and and letting us know how, you know, they they thought it was a a good plan and uh they appreciated being in receipt of a copy of it. Um and so the Planning Commission at this point has also held a public hearing, which was done in November, uh to receive public comment on the process itself and on the plan. And again, all of the comments that were heard at that time were overwhelmingly positive uh and stakeholders couldn't share enough how they felt that the public engagement in this process was very robust. And so the Planning Commission, uh at the end of that public hearing, has basically recommended to you folks to recommend the approval of the plan. If you don't, uh after any questions, final questions that you might have or any concerns that you have. So that's why me and Megan are here tonight is to kind of go over the plan with you via slideshow presentation and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. If you could two more pages up, so it says work session. Um and I hope that all of you are as excited as this kid is um about the master plan than he is about being in Rolling Hills. Um and we were excited to be part of this. Tonight, um we've been before you before. I know that you've had a chance to review it. Um we've had comments also from Township Board members, thank you. Um and but tonight, we really wanted to go over the future land use and the implementation parts of the master plan. We hadn't ever taken a deep dive into those. And please stop me at any time that you have questions. Um I also brought a printed um version of the master plan itself along with me. Um one of the things we wanted to emphasize though, before diving into future land use and implementation, is that the future really came from the community. As Jason pointed out, we had really robust community engagement. Um but we, um along with the Steering Committee, committee felt strongly that anything that was in the plan should be something um that actually was rooted in what the community contributed. So all of these ideas that are in here really came from Ipsalany Township. Go to the next one, thanks. Diving into the future land use, this is the map that's adopted in 2014 and the proposed future land use map. Um and you can see that they're very different. Um in 2014, it's more of like a a patchwork quilt. It has 18 different categories of future land use. It's very specific parcel by parcel. The proposed map um is more thematic and only has seven categories. If you can go to the next one, please, um I can want to just talk about why. Number one, we heard loud and clear that there needed to be a sense of place. Sometimes people said, there's not a lot of there there and we want more there. We're not sure how to get there. Um and so we felt that the future future land use map was one of those things that could get you there. And also, um being here for office hours and hearing from staff, felt like a lot of times there's not the flexibility that's needed um in that very parcel specific type of future land use map. And so really looking at these to be um things that consider the location surrounding properties and not a a strict menu. Again, it's based on place. Um it integrates um land use, design and transportation. If you look at the draft of the plan, you'll see for every future land use category, um there's a description. There's what the land uses are, but there's also design concepts and considerations, which will go into what type of road should be there, what type of landscaping, what type of uses, what type of mix of uses. Also, um it looks to attract talent, create value and increase productivity. And so those are baked into each of those categories. So I would like to run through each of those. And you can see here there's seven. I also want to clarify that um in the dark green, you'll see some yellow dots. Um and those represent existing neighborhoods. Um we wanted to make sure that we recognize all the neighborhoods in Ipsalany Township and that they were they were noted on there. Could you go to the next one, please? So there is a category for agricultural preservation and the main intent there is to preserve agriculture. That's something that we that that was shared and that's a main policy change. Those parcels that are in the light green there are working farms or large parcels that are adjacent to the working farms that have good soils um for for agriculture. They're looking for any future development there to be complementary to agriculture. Any new neighborhoods that would come in would need to cluster and leave something like 20 to 30% of the land as open space. And really, though, this is not something that can be done exclusively through zoning and land use. This is something where partnerships and programs are needed in order to be successful. The next one, if you could scooch up a little, is, oh, actually, I think down, did we skip one? Yes, there. The next one in the dark green, mostly south of um south of I-94, is looking to preserve open space, but also to preserve that those neighborhoods that are in those areas. So to preserve and improve those existing neighborhoods, but also to preserve the open space and the natural features. Because what we heard is that people said, that's what makes my neighborhood special. Is and not only that, my neighbors and and my home, but also what I'm surrounded by and that environment. And I want that, um I want that to be protected as much as possible. Um and so agriculture might play a role in that, um but also any, again, any new housing development would look to cluster to preserve that open space. You could scroll down to the yellow. Thank you. The next category is neighborhood preservation. Um and those are the neighborhoods that are to the north of I-94, but also around the lake um and looking to preserve and improve those single family neighborhoods through rehabilitation and infill. A lot of things that the township does now and has programs and partnerships. Also to note though, in the existing, in those land use categories, it says attached and multiple housing could happen at the edges if it fits with the neighborhood. And also reuse of school buildings or churches or other buildings that are non residential that are in a neighborhood could fit if it's fits with the neighborhood. And that's really the theme of there is if it fits with the neighborhood and if it helps the neighborhood. The blue is neighborhood transitions. And this is a very different land use category than you've had previously. Previously, if you look at these areas in the match, the the map, this is where your quilt really comes into play. A variety of land uses are allowed, would be allowed in those areas. Single family, um attached, multiple family housing, commercial office, institutions, parks. But really what the language in it says is that each individual's neighborhood, unique character should be respected and preserved. And we recognize that these are land uses that are transitions between neighborhoods. These are areas that are transitions between neighborhoods and things that might be more intense, whether it's the lake, whether it's a corridor, um whether it's the highway, um whether it's a job center. Um and so then to provide some flexibility. And um for instance, for redevelopment of Gollit Village, this was a concept plan that was done during the master plan um process and seen by the community several times. It has all of those different land uses in it. It has commercial, um it has multiple family, it has a civic center and and building in the blue um and looks to have smaller single family on the edges to transition to that neighborhood. So what that this part of the master plan does is allows that flexibility for something creative to happen instead of pegging a very specific land use to a very specific parcel all throughout the township. And we give you more flexibility as decision makers. Also, in the master plan, are looking to have mixed use corridors. Um and throughout those corridors would be commercial, office, multiple family, public institutional uses and also parks and plazas. And those two images that you see in the bottom, one is neighborhood. Um and those would be Packard um and E-course and um the part of Whitaker and Huron that is south of um south of Huron River Drive. That that image is as dense as we would, as it would go. Um and that's taken from the E-course and East Michigan Ave placemaking plan that was done, adopted by you two years ago. And then regional, so Michigan Ave on both sides, um Huron coming down to Huron River Drive and then also Washtenaw. That would be, again, same mixture of land uses, just a different scale. Um and so the image that says regional, that's from the reimagined Washtenaw plan. And when, again, those would be as dense as those could go, um what's envisioned. Finally, um there's innovation and employment, um looking to what you previously would have called your, uh you previously called your industrial districts. But um in talking to economic development folks and businesses, really felt that that didn't capture what you were looking for. These are places for jobs, high tech research, development. Of course, industrial manufacturing would still be part of it, um but it could also be offices, including corporate campuses. Um and also more of warehousing, shipping and logistics, which you've seen more come into your township recently um in terms of looking for those job centers and industrial and industrial buildings. And that would work in concert with with other land uses um and also other efforts by the township, as can be shown by this concept plan. Again, it's included in the master plan um for the Willow Run area or the American Center for Mobility. Looking to tie all those in also with street improvements to also um better integrate the area and the transportation, not only for um the job centers there, but also for the adjacent neighborhoods. Finally, um there's the Township Core, um which seems, when you look at the future land use map, you think, probably think, what's that pink thing right there in the middle? Um and um this is the area where um before in your in your current master plan, you call it the Township Center. Um and it really looks to concentrate the core of activities here um in this area, including right where we're standing. But also to have them in specific places where they integrate together in a plan. So that Township Core plan actually uses the same color scheme as the rest of the future land use plan. So the purple is for innovation and employment. The red area is um the mixed use core. So again, that's that corridor coming down, um but that can swoop in and out based on the natural features. There is um parkland and open space that's looking to be preserved around the Eagle Crest Resort, but also the parks that you have. Also recognizing that any dense core area needs rooftops to support um the retail that's there. There in yellow, there would be um single family to multiple family housing allowed. Um and the bright green is a buffer zone um that separates that area from single family to the other side. And also looks to preserve those natural features that are in there. If you look in maps, um those, that area is wet and is wooded. Um and also a perfect place for um trail to it be integrated that loops this entire area. And then the blue is to build on the civic center and the library that are right here to look for that area, this area, um to be that core of civic and of civic engagement um and also to build on the parks and the veteran air and the and the Vietnam Veterans Memorial that's here. Any questions on future land use before we go to implementation?
Any question? I have, just when I received a phone call from residents in the Gollit Village area and I I think I I told them wrong, because they were very concerned about having multiple in Gollit Village and as a potential future land use. And once it's a future land use, then you can request a rezoning, correct?
They could request rezoning to multiple family. Um and there is some multiple families shown in that concept drawing. But it's really then the master plan and that concept drawing are supposed to act as guides. So if the community came out strongly in the neighborhood at the time of the development that came and said, we don't want multiple family, um we don't think it's appropriate. And it was, and then you looked at the circumstances and agreed. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's it's going to happen. So, yes, and it's there as any transition district and it's shown in the concept plan. But I think the main thing is that it's looking for there to be a sense of place um and that it should um be compatible and integrate with the existing neighborhood. And I think also at that point in time is to talk about what density and what design would would be appropriate at that point.
And excuse me, but, because I'm not sure, but my understanding in my years of public service is if you have a future land use that has that designation from a legal standpoint, it's hard to deny it, because you're saying as a community, we, that's what we see as our future.
So in the Gollit Village for the, it's blue in the transition district and it's got, I can look probably six or seven different future land uses there. It doesn't have one. So um just because it says one of them, it doesn't mean that you have to accept it. It means that you have to accept one or a combination that's on that menu. So if it was, if you were operating under the current future land use map that you have now and it said multiple family, eight to 12 dwelling units per acre, then yes, absolutely. But this transition neighborhood district, um what it says is that there are.
It says primary multiple.
Single family, convenience service, general medical office, public institutional, public parks, attached residential, multifamily residential on neighborhood edges and adjacent to neighborhood preservation and mixed use corridor areas.
And on page 50, it says neighborhood transition districts, neighborhood transition districts are primarily multiple family. It's on page 50. I thought you were doing like.
No, it said are primarily multiple family housing, comma, commercial and office uses, comma, and but can include single family homes. So primarily, uh I'm sorry to disagree with you, but it says primarily multiple family, commercial and office. So all three of those are supposed to be the primary in the way that it was written. So I I can see that just on that first line, if you didn't go to the second line.
I'm just a little concerned about, I don't. The resident called and I I started digging into it.
Yeah, no, 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 absolutely, absolutely.
And I don't know how to handle it really from this point, but I I'm very concerned about putting a primary use as multiple family housing. I mean, it it does have a comma after it, that's true. But what I want to know is that if people come and apply, can they do that in that district? See, and I think they can, right? I think, I mean, just based on how we've done it.
Right, so and 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 a uh a land use category this broad is not something that you've you've had before, so.
It's not locked in.
It's not locked in.
It weren't used to historically.
Right, so it could be any of those three or any of those other ones that are listed in there. So it's meant to be primarily, you could say primarily office, commercial and multiple family and or multiple family. And if you look at those areas that are in the blue, all, some of them are only multiple family. Some of them are only office, some of them are only commercial and others are a mixture if you go up and down a corridor.
Just to step into, also keep in mind that historically, planning wise, multiple family residential is used as a buffer between commercial development and single family development. Uh because, you know, oftentimes you don't want to abut a single family neighborhood right up against a commercial development for all the reasons that you, you know, loud noise, traffic, parking, you know, debris and things like that, blowing around, plastic bags or what have you. and things like that, blowing around, plastic bags, or what have you. So historically, multiple-family or condos or any of those types of multiple-family-type products that you can think of are used as sort of a transition away from the commercial use that might be like right at the road. So if you look at some of the blue districts, you know, that are kind of in and along the corridors, it mentions multiple-family, because typically, that's the kind of product that you use a block off of a commercial district, or as a means of separating more intense commercial uses from, you know, established neighborhoods, so that they're not dealing with, you know, the commercial use right up against them. So the, the uses that they have listed in here in these Neighborhood Transition Districts, excuse me, I think are, are good, because they, they primarily act as that buffer between these single-family, these historically single-family neighborhoods. It gives the township the flexibility, if someone comes in either with a multiple-family development, or an office development, or some of these like step-down uses, to find out which one might work best along these edges of these neighborhoods. So in the Gold Village case, if someone came in and said, you know, "We don't like multiple," you know, there's some other uses built in here too, like office space, or some other types of uses that, that might better fit the needs of the residents who live there. And there's single-family mentioned in here as well. So I mean, you know, you could have the discussion with the developer at the time, "Look, you know, we're not looking for multiple here. We'd rather it be single-family housing that kind of meets the same character as what's behind it." So I think it does a pretty good job of being flexible and providing enough, a range of different uses that would give this board the flexibility to kind of pick and choose, you know, if someone came and wanted to do a development, you know, what we'd like to see.
Yes, Court Judge.
I just, I know that generally, I'm not, I'm speaking for the whole board, but I think just historically, as a township, I think that we all feel that we have way, we have enough of rental multiple. I think that if you were looking at, gosh, I drove over to An Irish Lane Road, I hadn't been out there, I don't know when, I couldn't even believe the number of condos, and I thought, "Oh, my gosh, those would be so great to have here." I think, I don't know, is there any way in the master plan to make that kind of statement as a general statement, that when we have masked, when we say land use for multiple, we're really looking at condos and owner-occupied? Because I think that changes everything, and I think that's what, and residents are more concerned about, is having our traditional, not to say that they're problem children, because some of them are excellent, but I think that if you looked at like a ratio, like we have so few multiples that are, we can name them, there are two, Aspen Ridge, no, Cliffs, and Georgetown, is that it? We have three multiples that are owner, and that's what our residents want, whether they're young, new upstarts, millennials coming in, and we also have our seniors who want that. So is there a way to make that a statement? I don't even know if the rest of the board agrees. I know it's a big issue, and our residents call all the time, and they have to move out of our township, which they don't want to, to find the housing that they want. I don't know. It was just... And I think like Gold Village, I think would be great, to have the buffer be owner-occupied owned condos, where right now it's shopping, with all the trash and all the stuff you talk about.
Right, and I think...
And then in front of that could be some really cool, you know, that would service the neighborhood and serve some retail, you know, hair shop, you know, stuff like it used to be.
And I think that's what, sort of what that plan is, that's in the plan itself for Gold Village. It's not this township saying, "That's exactly what we want," but it's a schematic or a concept plan that says, "Look, this is really what we're looking for." So it, it does that. So you can point to that, if someone were to come in, say, to do a redevelopment there, you could say, "Look, this is even in our master plan. We're looking for something that's a mix of uses, including commercial, attached, single-family, or a regular, traditional, single-family product." So having those types of small sub-area plans in the master plan is very beneficial, because we can point to it and say, you know, "Really, this is what the township is looking for." I mean, it might not be in that exact arrangement, but these are the types of uses that we're looking to provide our residents. And the market's going to drive it, obviously. I mean, we can try and plan for a particular product by putting it out there, but the market in real estate are what's going to drive sort of the condo development.
How come, why don't we get any of it? No one even comes here. We get mischief projects that want to come, rentals. We don't, no one knocks on our door, and then I drive just a little ways away, and it's just like flourishing with, is it the price?
I mean, I would have to kind of go, go back to my office and kind of look, I'm sure there's more than...
Just really interested in knowing, what do we need to do to attract those? Sometimes I think people look at stuff and they don't really, we had the same thing with commercial development. Krogers didn't want to come, and Brenda had to convince the president or somebody, whoever she got to bring, you know, and once they come, it's like, "Oh, my gosh, it's the number-one Kroger store," like I think in the Midwest, or like, you know, in the United States, it's crazy. But because they look at those numbers and, you know, the income, I don't know, something messes them up, but firsthand anecdotal, we know people just come in here constantly wanting those kinds of...
Well, I think this, this, this master plan does a good start of setting the table, is basically what I would consider this doing. It sets the table for people who want to come into town and, and start having the conversation, "Okay, what is it the community is looking for?" And I think this future land use plan is very easy to read and understand. There's only seven districts in it, and it spells out exactly the types of things that we're looking for. And unlike a traditional master plan that gives people density requirements and stuff like that, this leads, leaves it pretty open to different types of uses, and lets people propose what they think is going to work, which I think to the end will work, to your point, where if we have the flexibility to, you know, allow these types of uses to come in and different types of projects, then we may have, you know, we may be able to secure a land, those types of developments more often than if we have real stringent rules like some of the older plans have.
But I think the litigation thing is real for us, because we've been down that path where we get sued, to go to the Michigan Supreme Court to stop something, and I think that's real, that's real.
Yes.
I was just going to say, before Jason used the word flexibility, we heard it many times in the Planning Commission, when Jason was there, and Megan, and heard it from different Planning Commissioners, I think this plan offers us the flexibility that we don't currently have, that may attract those things that we hope to see in the future. And so, I'm comfortable with it, that it's going to offer those things to get us what we want down the road. I know that's, it's new to us, it's different, and it can be a little bit maybe intimidating, because I was one of those ones that argued against it for a while, as Megan knows. But it does offer us some flexibility that we don't currently have to maybe attract those things we hope for in the future.
On the Neighborhood Transition Districts, on page 55, it does say Neighborhood Transition Districts are primarily multiple-family, but, and so I would say that, based on the conversation, we should change that to what it is in that map, at the very least. And then I wanted to point out the design concepts and considerations for that, because as your planner, if I was writing the review letter for rezoning or a PUD, I would look at these, and those would be in my review letter, and I would go through them. So on design concepts and consideration, new development shall be viewed on a case-by-case basis to respect the existing scale and character of the surrounding area. Ensure appropriate transition of intensity of uses and scale to adjacent single-family neighborhoods. A varied mix of uses is encouraged. New single-family development shall mirror design patterns of neighborhood preservation areas. So it should mirror what's up next to it.
That's the opposite of what he just said.
Well...
He said a buffer was multiple.
Right, but if they did have, if they did have single-family, that it should mirror what's next door. So that, that neighborhood, and it's just, usually it's the streets, so the streets should be the same. Walkability and non-motorized connections within and to Neighborhood Transition Districts is essential to maintain neighborhood character and access to daily needs and services. And then each individual neighborhood's unique character must be respected and preserved. So if something threatened that unique character, then that would be something that I know that we would look at, and then if it, you as a board felt like it didn't respect that character, you would be within your rights to say no, that it did not meet that part of the master plan.
Yes, Justice.
Just, thank you. Couple of questions back, I do, I mean, the flexibility is great. My biggest question is, can you be too flexible, right? So, and I think this may get to what Supervisor Stumbo was talking about in regards to Gold Village, is if you have such a broad, right, definition, and then just say, a developer wanted to come in and put something that would be not suited with the neighborhood, existing neighborhood that's next to it, can you get a lot of pushback from that developer? And I'm not saying I don't have it flexible. What I am saying is, maybe, and saying, as it relates to the neighborhood, things need to, you know, say, options are, you know what I'm saying? Like this and/or, or maybe in some cases, it may just need to be or. You know, I hope that makes sense, because I do share a bit of that concern, especially when it comes down to residential development, that if you make it too broad, someone may try and take advantage of that.
Let me try and answer that. So, again, you got to remember that this plan is just setting the table.
Okay.
And that the zoning ordinance is what dictates...
Okay.
...the use and gets real specific. And before we can kind of weigh into the zoning ordinance part of this, this sort of is that first step to just give people a pretty broad perspective, "Okay, what is it the township's looking for in these areas?" And I think this does a pretty good job of giving people sort of that first idea of what the community is looking for, but then with the realization that, once they've kind of landed on a project that they think they might do, they then have to kind of look at our zoning ordinance next and say, "Okay, does this fit into zoning? And if it does, then that's great. If we want to rezone, what's going to be the appropriate rezoning, and, and what are the other surrounding districts around that parcel, and what makes the, the best sense?" So I mean, your, your point's well taken.
It will always, even though this is broad, the, I guess you could say, the final, might as I say, matrix is going to be the zoning.
That's right.
Okay.
Yep, that'll be the determining factor. This kind of just lets people know, you know, if they're looking at a piece of property along E Course Road, let's say, or Michigan Avenue, like East Michigan Avenue, what is it the township's looking for as far as redevelopment? This kind of gives them sort of that first idea, "Okay, they're looking for a mixed-use development with some retail on the first floor, maybe retail up front and housing in the back," or sort of those types of mix of uses. But then it'll be the, the zoning ordinance later that sort of explains to them, "Okay, how do you get to that?" And that'll be another discussion that, you know, at some point in the beginning of this presentation, it talks about 2020, and the zoning ordinance rewrite, is it going to be a big part of getting this plan to sort of actuate some of that in real life, you know, going forward, to put somewhere where the rubber meets the road? "Okay, this is what we envision. Now here's the zoning ordinance standards that kind of require you to do what's in this document." So this is sort of just the first part of laying out, "Okay, these are the expectations that we have. The next piece will be the zoning piece, which is, okay, these are how you achieve a development with our expectations in mind." And then at the end is sort of the end product. So this, this just kind of gets the ball rolling, and then the bigger discussions that will be had will be, you know, with regard to the zoning ordinance and what, you know, shape that's going to take.
So if we zone it, it would be rezoned to...
Transition district? Is that...
Not necessarily, and I know Megan has a nice matrix someplace that kind of shows you, yeah, it looks like it's, and I'll let her go ahead, but yeah, she does have a zoning plan table.
So it'd be OS1, B1, RM, RM4, RM3, RM2, R5, R4.
Where are you at, Megan?
I'm on page 51, if you look on the zoning plan table. So R4, R5, which are single-family categories, RM, RM2, RM3, RM4, which are your three multiple-family categories on the map, B1 and OS1, which are transition areas.
I, and, you know, I'm thankful for the resident who called, but it just, I have to agree with them, that if it's designated as RM2, 3, 4...
OS1 or B1.
Yeah. But if they chose to bring a multiple development, and that's all they chose to do, would they have a right to file an application for rezoning on that?
Well, yes, they would have, of course they could file an application, you need to give them due process. You would not have to grant them that. You could say, "There are other zoning categories that are allowed, B1, OS1. That is more appropriate for that neighborhood."
Even though the future land, yeah, like this is a total different...
No, it's a really, it's a different headspace, it's a different, it's a different take on it, because every time before, your map has, basically, if we redid this table for your existing map, it would be one-to-one or one-to-two. There would only be that.
Right. And I understand that and respect the flexibility that people need, but I know it said primarily multiple, comma, but with multiple being the first category in that, it says to me as a developer, "Oh, the community wants multiple."
And we can change that wording in there, the intent...
I mean, I don't, don't do it just because of me, but I, I, I think I agree with the resident that this would send a possible wrong message to a developer, right?
And really, the intent is that we're looking for a mixture of uses there, multiple-family could be one of them, along with office, along with business, along with parks, along with institutional, in order to make it a great place that also supports the adjacent neighborhood.
Yes.
I'm going back to the and/or again, if that's okay. What you had just said, I think it makes it very and/or. So in other words, it's not kind of throwing everything all into the same pot, it's basically saying, it could be and/or, you know, and it's not saying that, "Oh, well, this is something that cannot be denied if need be, if it doesn't fit the characteristics of the neighborhood surrounding it." So I, maybe a word change is maybe what's needed, I don't know, but that's what I would suggest.
So Court Crowe made a suggestion, and I don't think, I don't, I don't, probably a legal question about owner...
You can have an asterisk. You can do an asterisk.
You know, the 2015 affordability study...
So we do cite that another, and I would defer to your township attorney, but, yeah, the differentiation between the rental and the homeownership is, you know, you're nudging up to Fair Housing Act and housing discrimination and looking at those, and we wouldn't want to put you in that position. Also, we know how much you value every resident of all incomes, and sometimes even the whiff of that can be taken a different way by some of your constituencies. And one of the things that we were impressed with here in the community engagement was just the breadth of people who came and talked and shared.
And so in the Gold Village meeting, they said, "This is what we want?"
Yeah, I mean, we showed that, we, we showed that, there was some concern about what the smaller bungalows would look like, and what the price point would be, and, you know, I mean, what we said was, you can't, we can't control that, a developer would come, so this is a concept to show them to get, to get them, to get them to come. Also, in that, in that concept plan, there's a green buffer, there's like a, you'll see there's a line of green, actually, if you can go back, and that's, that's a, that's a, that's a, what does that say? I can find it, but that's the, you know, there's a big wall, that's a buffer zone, and, and that is the retaining wall buffer zone, and it says, "Existing retaining wall would be rebuilt and relanscaped to provide a buffer between the new development and the existing neighborhood." And that's needed anyway structurally, because of the way that, that's built in the topography. So, and these are all sorts of things that your staff would do at the table when somebody comes to, to the, to the office with a plan or idea, and then this is... And then this is meant to, for them to see this and say, oh, okay, there's possibilities here. And then they come in and they talk to your, your staff. And then, you know, and then it progresses from there. And then it's really, as Jason said, the zoning is what shapes what they can do. And so part of also in terms of for rent versus for ownership, a lot of times is what the design requirements are. So if in your zoning ordinance, you require a high quality of design, you're requiring high-quality density. A lot of times our concern about density is not necessarily the number of people per acre, it's the quality of the density. And so those are things that you can do in the zoning ordinance in terms of putting in design regulations and what, what, what that multiple family should look like and how it should be designed.
Quick question, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, just a very quick question, actually. I know there's some communities that's undergoing like major transitions, like for instance, Pontiac right now is going under a major transition from some, you know, ways that things were to where it is now. And they're doing a really big resurgence because of it. So my question is, is that basically communities that are going through that type of resurgence is because in their master plan, they do have maybe some of the broader definitions and define it inside of the zoning ordinance itself?
Yeah, they've used their.
Or zoning plan, I guess.
Yes, they use their master plan to set the table. And then also usually what's happening in some communities like Pontiac is that they're loosening up the zoning regulations to, to a high degree in order to bring things in. And what also then, a lot of times what they're doing is they're regulating the building more than the use.
Okay.
I was going to say, and just to add on to that, and I don't want to go down too far into a rabbit hole, but I think it's worth noting is that a city like Pontiac, who's really historic, you oftentimes, years ago, when the city was first founded, there wasn't really like Euclidean zoning like we have today where all the uses are separated from each other and this use goes between this use and this use and this use. Back when Pontiac was first founded as a city, mixed-use wasn't a term, but that's what it was. So like you had the bank on the first floor, people lived above it, or it was a butcher shop on the first floor. And there were apartments and it was all kind of intermixed and people just kind of did what they did and it worked because people lived in such a dense, you know, city environment. Like Megan was saying, planners are beginning to find out that this strict interpretation of Euclidean zoning over the years hasn't had the effect on creating sense of places. People like to be where there's all kinds of stuff going on. And it might be, you know, a mix of uses that you wouldn't typically see together, like park space, commercial space, breweries, all these things that people like to be around don't necessarily work in concert with each other in some of the older zoning regulations. And so by loosening these standards up and giving a broader basket of uses to developers, sort of like this plan is doing, it's giving them flexibility, at least in the master plan sense, to have different uses at their disposal. It gives us as a staff the ability to come up with different types of projects that might not otherwise be possible because of such rigid standards. But that's not saying we want to totally deregulate things. We just, we want to make sure that like in this neighborhood district, this transition area, that we have a good enough basket of uses available in the master plan to make decisions like this calls for where if it's on the edge of an existing neighborhood, that we make the best possible decision to marry those two up, the existing neighborhood with whatever might be coming in. And this has enough uses listed in it. We can change some of the verbiage to stray away from it being multiple-family is sort of the primary, but we, we would want to keep multiple-family in the basket along with single-family and office and the other uses that it lists in there in order to be able to do something, you know, with one of these types of redevelopments, the Galt Village just being one example.
Yeah, because you have, but it, but can include single-family.
Yeah, we can, we can go back.
So maybe it could possibly include multiple as opposed to it being the first thing?
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I'm the only, like I said, is we have been challenged in the court systems in the past when it says that our future land use says you can do this. And even though it's not zoned that way, because it says that, you know? So if there was a way to explain it better, you know, that it's an option, but it's not a right.
Yeah, yeah. And I, again, I think the intent was to put out all of those uses as options and that the best possible, really what the decision should be is the best possible solution for the neighborhood and protecting those adjacent and having a transition.
We have an opportunity, it seems like, I'm sorry. Yeah. Because I, I know the, what Jason just went through, because when you travel, you see those in the news. I remember seeing a hotel next to apartment building next to, which you would never have seen, you know, and the, you know, everything's brand-new and green spaces. Our issue is that, I'd be interested in knowing, this is off the record, but I mean, you don't have to say anything now, but of an older area like ours, because we have these smaller, not like big, you know, off of 275 or 94 corridors, which is kind of where, when you're traveling, you see all that new stuff out there off of the expressways that has, you know, residential mixed in, well, single-family residential mixed in with hotels, mixed in with, you know, just as everything is like right there within, you know, five square mile, which we don't, you know, we all, everything here is clearly defined. So it'd be really, but we have an opportunity now with these spaces, Ekor's Road. And so I, I see the vision. I know it's like a different downscaling of that. But it'd be really interesting to know somebody that's actually done that and made that work where they really mixed them up and stuff too. Because like I can see that it can work, but it's got to be the right mix and it's got to really protect the neighborhoods. Or otherwise, you've had the opposite effect instead of adding value to the community you could take away. But I could see having entertainment at Galt Village together with, you know, condos or like the tiny houses like you have with the buffers. And then even having, you know, high-rise, you know, maybe on the corner that it's away from on the service drive and that, on higher-rise, you know, five or six-story apartment with all the young millennials that want to live there. And the seniors can go there too, because they can walk right to the Ford Lake, you know, to the lake and kayak, you know, and all that cool stuff and still walk down to Depot Town. I can see it as being a perfect place for somebody with some pockets of money to come in and it could be highly, it could be really successful. But it's got to protect the neighborhoods, which is what we're all saying. So if there's some way you can come up with that verbiage, you know? And I don't know if we can, we can adopt it with that being in there. And then you guys come back and if we don't like it, we can change that paragraph or whatever. I don't know, I don't know how we do that procedurally here tonight.
Well, I mean, we can, we can amend the document to reflect the things that we've talked about here this evening. And, you know, if you want to make a recommendation subject to us changing that verbiage prior to us, you know, getting it up on the website publicly, we can do that. I mean, just so that we make sure that.
Just bring it back to the next meeting or something?
Exactly what you'd like, if, if that's what you'd like.
Bring it back like to the March 3 meeting or something?
Yeah, if you prefer that.
I mean, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, and like I, I would have shared this, but I, I just.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, and I thought, well, that's a good point, really. It's a good point, you know? And your home is the largest investment anyone makes. So we, we don't want people to think that we would ever do anything to hurt that investment, right? We just want to enhance it. So, and yeah, and maybe if we put it out a little longer and let Galt Village, you know, know that it's out there too, their neighborhood group. You know, just to show that this is what is proposed.
And we did show that concept plan to the Galt Village group during the process.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to try to not delay the adoption of it till.
That's what you said.
I mean, maybe next.
No, I just said maybe.
If you're interested.
I mean, I think the major verbiage is that paragraph on 55. But maybe there's other places, but instead of it saying primarily multiple-family housing, to switch that off.
I mean, we'd be happy to.
It's primarily something that's going to really protect the neighborhood, but at the same time allow these mixed, you know?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes. I mean, that's a major concern, right, Brendan, those two areas?
We use the, so a neighborhood transitions districts, we use the exact same paragraph that we do in the, on page 50. So if you look at page 50, take that and say neighborhood transition districts are, are primarily, and then say commercial, comma, office, and multiple-family housing, multiple handy uses, but can include single-family homes, civic institutional spaces, compatible with existing areas. These districts are transitioned from the neighborhood preservation areas to more intense uses. That, and then take that paragraph and put it as the front paragraph on page 55.
I would just add one caveat, strength, just a little bit more in saying the primary goal is to strengthen, is to strengthen the neighborhoods. Because I think that just gives you, and I'm not sure that verbiage is right, but something that says our primary thing when we're looking at it is how is it going to add value to that area and to that neighborhood? And you making a bunch of money off of rental apartments is not it. It's got to be more than that. That the neighborhoods is the major focus.
Madam Chair, would it be, I'm sorry. Would it be a possibility, because do we even have, do we have a meeting on March 3 with you? Okay, I didn't know.
We don't have one the next 17th.
All right. Yeah, so then that answers that question. Sorry, we have a meeting on March 3. Because I was thinking maybe making a motion to approve with the noted, changes as noted. And then basically, we would be able to see the changes as noted. I know someone said something, I think Court Row, about bringing it back to a March 3 meeting. I would be fine with, as long as the changes as noted is, is put in there as a verbiage.
We have a little bit more on implementation, but I know that I've taken most of, we've taken a lot of your time out of your work session. We just wanted to highlight that, if you can scroll down to the, that it goes by, it has a, a table that goes by goal, catalyst project, strategy, and then gets into what's going to happen year zero to two, year zero, two to three, and five years and later. And the specific one we highlighted was about looking at recruiting businesses and where you would do that and how you would do that. And so it puts something generally in for those things. But then obviously, as you go through and you plan and the planning department sets out what they're going to do for the year or economic development, these things are going to get drilled down and more specific.
Thank you for your time.
No, this is great. I mean, this is great. It really is, but it's a lot to do and it's a big step forward, you know?
It is, it is. And we wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with it. So we appreciate the discussion tonight.
Thank you.
So what are we going to do?
I said, so what are we doing tonight? So do you want us just to wait until and just adopt it with the new language in two weeks?
If it's, if it's okay with the Board of Trustees, I'd like to have Megan go back and amend the language for those districts, get it out to you ahead of that meeting for your review and comment, and then place this item back on the agenda for that, for approval for that, that next meeting. If you're, if you, yes.
Appreciate that.
And I know it's an extra meeting and we might have to pay more money, but that's okay.
Yep.
I want to make sure everyone's comfortable.
Thank you.
No, thank you. This is great.
All right, we'll get that back out to you folks here shortly. Thank you.
Thanks.
Clerk Row has asked if we could go to number 11, which is a request to approve a memorandum of agreement between Greater Ann Arbor Prosperity Region Two Initiative and the chapter, and the Charter Township of Slandy and accept the grant in the amount of $26,690.
And I ask that because Kim Hill is here and he's been waiting patiently. And I don't know if you just wanted to give a synopsis on what it is that we're hoping to do, Kim?
Just your name for the record.
Kim Hill. We're trying to get kids and young adults hands-on with machinery to do a variety of projects. And we've got a whole, a facility to pull together. But it's, you know, the premise is that technology is rapidly sweeping into a lot of professions and people are graduating from high school and further on with not enough access or knowledge of our technology. So we've been developing an idea about how to get the technology into the kids' hands while they're still in school and so that they graduate with a lot more understanding of the technology. So the idea is a facility that would work with the public schools, the business, the community, the institutions of personal robotics and the like, where they could all come and the schools could run a curriculum. Folks could work on robotics projects and the like. It would have all the equipment that you would need, no staff, and the like. So that's the, that's the idea. And how do we get to that? We, when we, when we worked with Karen, Brenda and Sarah Jo, we came across a grant from the prosperity region that they offered. And so we wrote a grant asking them for funding to put together what would be a business and limitations, not a commitment to just a.
Feasibility.
Sorry?
Is it feasibility?
No, we, we looked out for feasibility.
A business plan.
We, we talked to a lot of people around it. The feasibility of it is designed, how would we get to some of it? How would we, you know, what are the nuts and bolts of what we have to.
Be in.
What we're building, the cost of it, to staff it, to report it, all that. How would the other schools want to work with it? So we applied for a grant and were awarded one, a digital one, to put together this plan. We walked in with the community, the business sector, academia, and developed something that would, that the community could coalesce around. So then what we would end up with is a, is a plan that we would use to, if you decided to go ahead and have a consensus, the plan would be to, to give to folks that we'd be asking to fund the creation of this facility, to staff it, to put the fund, the major funding into it for a number of years. So in the process, like I said, the, so what we're here right now is to, we've been awarded the grant. We have to go through a process of planning, matching, matching funding, either to funding or in-kind donations. We've got Washington County Community College, Washington County Community School District, you know, Middletown Aerospace, you know, Washington County. And you folks here, it's like the township there either helping bring that in funding or in-kind contributions to, to help us develop the plan. And so we've got everything there in place. And the prosperity committee has said we've, we've been awarded the grant. It was $26,690. They seem to have a memory of understanding from the township connected with that grant, just like legal. I mean, it is in your package, right?
Yeah, everybody has everything, yeah.
Okay, are there questions or? It's basically a pass-through IPSE Township in order to achieve the plan. Our contribution was 5,000 and in-kind services. And STEM and. And STEM and technology are all the buzzwords that everyone is using, and it's important to get it. We have, Lincoln School has one, Ypsilanti School has one, Whitmore Lake has a robotics team. They're trying to figure out if, if there is a way to have a centralized facility that people can go to and people can be trained at in order to, to get in the field of technology. Is that kind of-
Yeah, and it would be, it would, it would be a broad age spectrum. Ideally, this is what part of the process would be, we would be doing a wise meeting with the community and academia and businesses, but ideally the schools would see the value and get, integrate their, some of their programming into it. So kids would be starting to get focused as a sixth grade onward, folks who were graduating from high school, maybe just want to get a job at a local machine shop or something, could use, we could use this facility to get hands-on training with Ypsilanti equipment. People who are coming back, maybe their job is getting automated out and they need to upskill their, their, their skills, it would be a facility to do that as well. And so what we really want to be able to do is paint that whole picture, get it into a document that somebody could go through, we could apply, you know, for whoever we were asking for money, whether that's grant, grant funding, if it's federal, state, local businesses, and the like. But we need, we need a practical plan, where some of you say, you know-
So this is a first step?
Right.
So our contribution is 5,000 and in-kind? What does in-kind though mean?
In-kind means, you know, you host meetings of groups here at the facility, Brenda and Karen, or, or your staff could help with some of the research and the economic development, folks help us reach out to partners in the community such as the, you know, the businesses that are, that are here, academia and the like. So any of that time that is, is, you know, devoted to, and, and space, physical, you know, how much does it cost it, you know, per hour to use like this facility?
Sure.
That counts as in-kind.
Okay, Kim, the only reason I ask is I'm looking at one of the letters, it talks about the Ypsilanti Township Grant Administrator. Is that somebody on our end that's going to administer this grant?
It's probably me or Bren, one of her offices, yeah. Because we got to do the, the dollars got to come to us and then back out.
So we're a little more, okay, there's a little more involvement than, than $5,000?
$5,000 is-
It's actually probably going to be Giovanna when she gets the invoices.
It's like coordinated.
It's kind of like CDBG funding that comes through, yeah.
The $5,000 was the commitment that we made in 2019 for this. And it's mostly office space that you have, when, you know, if, if they want to have a meeting, they have it here. They've been, there's been several meetings already held here when Sarah Jo was here. So it's mostly meeting space.
Sure, but, but to your point about administering, which is the paperwork to go back to the prosperity grant, folks, I would be helping hand-to-hand with your, probably preparing a lot of it, and then just would go through the township, because we, and you'd be fully aware of what, because we're, because we're moving along the planning, regular meetings here, regular briefings with the folks. So administering the grant shouldn't be that costly.
I'm not worried about that, I'm just, if we're administering monies and somebody's going to audit that money, are they, are they coming to us for it or the prosperity? Who's going to audit it?
Prosperity has given us the dollars, we're the fiduciary, it has to come to us. And then as different, you know, projects or milestones are met, then there'll be invoices that comes in that probably both Bren and I will work on, sign off together, make sure that that, that part has been implemented, and then they'll go to Giovanna to have them paid, kind of like we do with CDBG funding or other grants.
Like PAM.
Trust fund, all those that it comes, comes through us, and then we have invoices, and then the money's come to us and then we pay them as a third party.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, I, I get the pass-through aspect of it. But I keep hearing you say facility. So is there a plan to build a facility in order to train people that would be going into the fields that you mentioned? And if so, would that facility be with Ypsilanti Township be looked at for such a facility?
The goal is always to have it on the eastern side of the county, that's been the focus.
Absolutely. The first answer to your question is ideally there's a, of course, we're aiming for a facility, whether that's built or it goes into an existing building, it might be, for instance, like the Galt Village, that's a good.
Oh, sorry. Good, now we can back up. Do I have to start over? So you get all that recording?
No, no. It's part of what the study's going to be, is to figure out what's-
Yeah, ideally, it's how do we get to a facility, whether it's build it, whether it's adapt and use something.
It's kind of a needs assessment to start out with, like what do we need? Do we need a 3,000, 10,000?
Yep.
You know, how much power do we need to place, you know, water sewer? And then if so, you know, is it cheaper to build? Is it cheaper to find a place? Is there some way? And, but I know the goal of all the groups, everybody that's been involved, because it's been more than Bren and I, it's been Scott, he's from Ypsilanti Schools, who started out and was WISD, there's been a lot of different folks involved in it, but the goal is all, it's, the focus has always been eastern Washington County. That's the students and the population, young adults, six through, you know, 20-some years old, that's been the focus of it, so.
Thank you. Plus the elderly.
Kim, is, for a non-student, is there a cost to this? If it-
No, we're trying to make it like as, as low cost or no cost as, as possible, right? We have to look at, as we look, pull the business plan together, is to look at how would revenue get generated? And obviously we're hoping businesses and grants and the like would, would, would be all we need, but then there's, you know, there might be a use model that could contribute to some of the costs of the facility.
But that's what the business plan is. It's like you can't get to step two unless you do step one, which is, I call it a feasibility, you call it a business plan, it's, in my mind, it's similar, to see if it's feasible to do.
I mean, one of the options is, people toss around, I'm not saying that this, anybody's moving in this direction, but the whole, like the ECA model, which is where, you know, they actually get student headcount fund, whether this school, one of the things is to find out, would this schools, would Ypsilanti and Lincoln even be interested in such a thing and sharing their headcount if they knew that they could advertise that we're a leading, you know, institute, you know, school district, you know, in technology, they could come here to this state-of-the-art, you know, you know, center, you know, that's going to have, you know, the welding equipment and all, you know, all these kind of new cutting-edge kind of things that people need in, in the workforce. The schools might say, heck no, we've been down that road, we're not giving it up. And that's going to change the, where you're going to look for your, you know, operational costs and long-term, you know, funding and stuff, so.
Sarah Jo started the process and then Karen and I kind of ended-
Dropped in your laps after we successfully applied for and got the grant awarded.
It's just to see if it's feasible, and we need someone to take the lead on it so that we can-
Absolutely.
...the pass-through cost for the grant, and then come back next month with a professional agreement with Mr. Hill to do the actual study.
Yep. We got, we'll come back here.
Right.
Okay. So we have our work to do.
Right.
Any more questions? Stan, are you?
All right.
Okay. It's 6:43, should we take a small break?
Yeah, we have to have an election commission meeting, so yeah, that's great, yeah. Thanks, Kim.
Thanks for your time.
So we're going to adjourn the, the work sessions ending at 6:44, and then you're going to have an election commission, 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 have an election commission.